We've called to order this special meeting of the City and Absoada City Council at 4:30 PM July 14th. Your Marks of Interest?
None.
Item three, conduct a workshop on the preliminary budget for FY 25-26.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight, we're going to kind of go through somewhat of a high level. These are still all estimates. Right now, we don't have final numbers. We don't have certified tax rule. That will come out in a couple of weeks from the Appraisal District. We still have a lot of our final numbers that are estimates, particularly on the revenue side of the equation. And so, we can't really determine exactly what all... We can squeeze into the expense side of the equation until we know the revenues because we certainly want to have a balanced budget approach. And so, we're going to go over tonight those estimates, kind of where we are, and what projects, based on our last discussion, the priorities from the strategic plan, and those things that we've been talking about, you all have been talking about even before I was here. And so, we're going to just kind of go through what it looks like, those major projects that it looks like will fit into this budget with the, again, the limitations that we spoke about last time, keeping the tax rate the same, keeping utility rates at a constant or level, and just seeing what all will go without issuing, planning on issuing any debt this year, so that we can take a good look at where are we financially? If we don't change the tax rate, if we don't issue debt, get a good assessment of where are we, so that we can make some good decisions on the path forward. So, we'll get right into it. We will review, like I said, real quickly, and I did print the slides out for you all to take notes on, hopefully, so you don't have to twist your neck and turn around, but so the audience can see, we'll go through the slides on the screen. But we'll review what we talked about last time, kind of our responsibilities, just real quick, the budget calendar, what our tax rate and utility rates look like. We'll reaffirm those priorities as we start talking about the tentative plans for this upcoming budget, and particularly, the employee benefits that we talked about, the strategic plan objectives, and some of the departmental priorities. And then, we'll certainly open it up at the end for anything that you all think that you didn't see, that you wanted to see, or that you thought would be in there, or things that are in there that you don't think are quite as high a priority as maybe others. So, just as just kind of a recap, the council's role in our charter is to adopt the budget. The staff puts together a budget based on the policies and priorities that you all established. So, that's why we have these workshops, to get a good feel for those policies and priorities. And then, staff goes to work to develop a balanced budget pursuing those priorities. Tonight, we'll go through this budget workshop. Again, these are the tentative plans because we don't have final numbers. And then, on or about August 4th, that's really close to when we're going to get the certified values, so I hope I get it to you that Monday. It could be Tuesday or Wednesday of that week, depending on when we get the official numbers from the Appraisal District. But you'll have it early that week of August 4th, the proposed budget. It will be posted on the website. It'll be ready. And then, on the 11th, we'll go through another budget workshop like we're doing tonight, to kind of walk through and just answer any questions for those things. And that's when the actual numbers will be in there for us to really get into if necessary. And then, skipping towards the next item, really, posting the notice is a legal posting, not any action here. But then, on September 8th, we will conduct our public hearing, and we will adopt the budget. And then, on the 22nd, we will adopt the tax rate. Again, we're anticipating keeping that the same. If you all see something or feel like a change is necessary, then we can certainly discuss that between now and then. So, this is just kind of, again, a review of what this year's tax rates were relative to the neighboring jurisdictions. And as we talked last time, if you think of the top five really being the full-service cities, we're kind of at the bottom there, which is, you know, we don't necessarily want to be the bottom, but we certainly don't want to have the highest tax rate in the area either. So, I think we're reasonably placed there, and if we can make our budget work, I don't see any reason for us to push that. The utility rates, as we discussed again last time, you all had a prior action several years ago that talked about doing an automatic escalation for five years. We know that there's been a lot of discussion of late about utility rates and utility bills. We have embarked on, actually, this week, last week really, we've started doing an analysis, a deep analysis of the utility rates, the utility billing system, making sure that we've got, you know, accuracy in there. And so, for the purposes of this budget, our recommendation is, let's not do an automatic escalation. Let's keep them where they are. Let's go through the utility rate study. Let that take place over the next couple of months, and then, let's see where that comes out and what kind of change we want to make after that gets. But we'll adopt the budget based on a flat, consistent utility rate. That will be the proposal. And then, just reviewing the strategic plan, as we get into that, this is just kind of, it lays out the mission and vision, and what those core values are that established. And then, at the very bottom, you see the seven goal areas that we will go through. And we saw these same slides last time. Just some, there's some different highlighted yellow based on, as we get closer to an actual proposed budget, what it looks like will actually fit into the various goals, and what the strategic objectives are in each of those goals. So, as we get to goal number one, the economic development and planning goal, you see several there that it either says in progress. That very first one is a fully grant-funded. We have embarked, and some of the audience, and some of you all may have seen, that there's been some NAV notify notifications going out, letting the residents know that we've started this process. We will have a first town hall workshop over at the Navasota Center on August 4th, right? On August 4th in the evening, and where we will start soliciting input from the residents on the comprehensive plan. You all did that workshop at the last council meeting, where you kind of kicked it off, and now, we will start talking to the residents and really formulating those plans. But grateful that that's a $300,000 project that is 100% federal grant-funded, so there were no matching local dollars required. With regard to our 10-year CIP and infrastructure plan, that is one of the items that we have talked about, that we're talking about doing an update to the strategic plan and an adoption of a CIP, most likely with Ron Cox Consulting, who you all have used prior, before I got here. You've used him a couple of times, and he's offered to come and help go through that process again, and we feel like that would well serve us. And then, as we jump to the bottom there, we get to a couple of other items. The Parks and Recreation Master Plan is actually on tonight's council agenda. We did an RFQ for that Parks Master Plan, and Burditt Consulting was the top-ranked, and they will be here tonight to answer any questions you might have. And we'll be asking for your permission to start negotiating a contract with them to kick that process off, kind of in parallel with the comp plan. And then, we haven't really started it yet, but we're hopeful that we can get some mileage out of whether it's the comp plan or as we're doing the CIP in parallel with one of those or in tandem, we might be able to get at least some form of an update to our major thoroughfare plan, which was last updated about five years ago, four years ago. And we think that's, it would behoove us as we start looking at potential developments, and as developers come knocking that might be looking at different areas, we should really take a close look at that thoroughfare plan and make sure it meets what we look for for mobility. As we get to goal number two, in marketing and communications, really, you've probably seen recently, we've started pushing some things out, again, through NAV notify, and we've also started looking at, probably going with a new survey tool, Survey Monkey, which a lot of people have probably used. It's a pretty popular one, has a lot more features than the one with the flash vote that we were using. And so, we're looking at rolling that into this proposed budget. Really doesn't change anything budget-wise. It's just a change to address specifically this objective, and to give ourselves more capability of soliciting feedback from the residents and being able to manipulate that data so that we can make it usable, and it means something for us. And so, that Survey Monkey gives us a little bit more capabilities with that. As we get into quality of life, this is one of those things that you all have been focused on for some time. It is ongoing. We have, you all did a very large investment in refurbishing the pool. It's getting a lot of good use now. We're getting a lot of good feedback, a lot of different programs going on there. On tonight's agenda are some upgrades to the library, the repairs on the roof. And then, following that, we will be doing some interior. Once we have the roof stop leaking, we can fix what got damaged on the inside. So, the insulation and the paint and the flooring and those kind of things, we can take care of as well. You've recently seen, you know, a little small investment in Cleveland Park, and we're getting some use there. We've talked about doing, and you all have expressed an interest in having, maybe something similar, a basketball court or something over at Miller Park with picnic tables, again, to let the residents in the area be able to make use of that space, at least in the meantime. You know, we've got this big Parks Master Plan coming, but that doesn't mean we can't do something, you know, for the next year or two to get those parks some usability before we do anything large in the Parks Master Plan. And so, looking forward for those to continue. And there's been, I don't need to go into all of them, but there's been some improvements recently at the soccer fields at August Horse and some other things. So, we're going to continue to look for those quality of life, especially the ones that are low-hanging fruit, easy for us to get, that we can get staff to go out there and do some. That just makes sense for us to give our residents something that they can enjoy and use. And as we get to staffing, we'll talk, we'll go into a little bit more detail on this slide, but you did, we did talk about in the strategic plan a couple of years ago. We noted that TMRS, we were still at 5%, which is lagging behind what most cities are. Most cities are at that 7%. And talking about stipend for certifications, that's something that we're reviewing right now. There are some for a few of our positions, but not a lot. And we're going to review those, make sure that we're using them uniformly across all departments, so that we don't have them lopsided or one department using them and others not. And it does not look like we would be able to make the leap from 5% all the way to 7% in one year, like we've talked about. So, it looks like what we're going to put in this, this year's budget will go from 5% to 6%. In talking to the executive staff, I instructed them a few weeks back, as you all asked, to start talking to their employees and see where they were on how important is this. And it seemed like we got a lot of good feedback. Of course, everyone's going to say, "Yeah, I'm interested," but when you really start comparing it as to what they might have to give up, it seemed like the overwhelming, I'll say consensus, was that they wanted kind of a balanced approach. They wanted to see some improvements in the retirement, but not at the complete exclusion of any immediate, you know, pay and salary increases. And so, we're trying to balance that with a reasonable pay structure that we can get this year, as well as a small increase to the retirement system. So, I think that comes directly from the instruction you all gave a few weeks back. And just as a note there on that slide, TMRS now, as of September 1st, with new legislation, they now will be allowing cities to go up to 8% on the contribution rate. So, if we don't make any increase, we're going to be really lagging behind as cities start to embrace the 8%. And if we were still at 5%, we would start to really see a delta there, and it could impact our recruiting for employees because other cities would just have a much more attractive retirement. But again, we'll take it in manageable bites. We're not going to try to get there all in one step. And as I said, we're currently reviewing the stipends, making sure that we've got those consistent. Our health insurance, we don't anticipate any health insurance. We don't have the numbers yet for the renewal rates, but we're going to try to keep the same plans and everything the same in place, continue to offer the same health insurance benefits that we, that have been at the same ratios of employer contribution for those. Again, we won't know until we get those, and those will be the first week of August before we actually get those renewal rates. But unless they come in drastic, we should be able to, again, still have that proposed budget to you that first week. And then, as we talked about, and I'm going to show a slide on the COLA and pay plan, we talked about doing a defined-step pay plan, which is illustrated on the next slide. I'll kind of just show it. It doesn't have, this is just a sample. This isn't our pay plan. This isn't, we put all positions and everything, but this is kind of an illustration of kind of how that defined-step pay plan. And the way this works, functions, is a position is classified into the pay grade. Say it's G13, just so you can kind of see as we look. And if that, you know, whatever that position is, that title, we advertise at the starting salary rate, which is the first box there. Ideally, we hire someone in at that rate. There are a few exceptions. If you're hiring, you know, mid-career, mid-management positions where you need to be competitive in the marketplace, and someone's coming with 10 or 15 years of experience sometimes, maybe you move up a couple of steps. You know, we try not to go too far up, but you might give yourselves a couple of steps of flexibility there in those circumstances. But you hire them in at that probationary step. They work their six-month probation. They have an evaluation at the end of their probation. As long as they meet the performance metrics that we establish, then they move up to the A or the first step beyond that. And then, at their one-year anniversary, they again have a performance review, and if they're performing satisfactorily, they move up to the B step, you know, at the one-year mark. And then, each year on their anniversary, they know that as long as they're performing satisfactorily, they move up to the next step in their pay grade. And as they progress along, their tenure is building up, their performance is becoming more efficient. So, that's, you know, while they are escalating up towards the top of their pay range. Anytime that the council, as a part of the annual budget process, gives a cost of living adjustment based on the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, let's say that's 3%, the whole chart would move up by 3%. The employees would stay in the same box that they're in, but all of the numbers on there would move up by that 3%, and that's how they get their cost of living adjustment. The plan here, because we don't have this in place, this year's proposed budget is being built around, unless you all give different guidance, what where we're currently going. Right now, the Consumer Price Index is showing over the last 12 months about 2.5%, 2.4 to 2.6, somewhere in there. So, what we are proposing is kind of a combination of a 2.5% COLA coupled with implementing this pay plan. And the way that works is, each employee, we would take their current rate at the end of the fiscal year. We would add 2.5%, and then, we would slot them in to the next, to the closest spot on the chart without going backwards. They would, everyone would get at least the 2.5%, and some would get a little more. So, if we were in that G13 still, and someone was in, let's just say, the C step, or they're not in a step right now, but let's just say their 2.5% gets them to $19.30 an hour. We would slot them at that C step at 19.55. So, they would slot into one of these spots, the closest to where the 2.5% gets them, moving upwards. And then, going forward, it would all be there. We would have the system in place. We would know where we're going to hire. It helps us for budgeting. It helps us for merit increases. Anytime we do a COLA, we just simply add the COLA to the whole chart, and it automatically changes everything. It makes it a lot easier on our budget. It makes it a lot easier to assure that we've got parity amongst positions. And so, we don't have, you know, someone gets their feelings hurt because they feel like their coworker was given a 3% pay raise, where they were only given a 2%. And here, everyone that's working at, you know, a satisfactory level or meeting the standard moves up to the next step along the progression. The idea there, some would argue that, well, what about the people that are performing above, you know, that standard? The mentality or the philosophy would suggest that someone that is a high performer consistently isn't going to probably stay in that same grade. They're going to promote within their job family up. They might go from a clerk to a senior clerk, or an operator one to an operator two, which moves them up to a whole nother pay grade, which gives them further out before they top out in their pay grade. And so, the high performers, I think, are handled a little bit differently, not on that one-time annual pay evaluation or performance evaluation, but they're handled throughout the course of their career by receiving the promotions that their performance is meriting.
Where is the basic grid going to come from?
What's that?
Where is the basic grid, the pay grid?
So, the proposal is going to start with something that looks very similar to this, and then, the idea is, and I don't know if I had it in that last slide, yeah, on the very last bullet there, we do plan on doing a salary survey to kind of help us with evaluating. We're going to start this as close as we can to what we currently have in place, and then, we're going to have that salary survey conducted, and they'll give us guidance on, hey, we really think G11 should start at 15.50. And the rest of everything is all formulas off of that. So, it really kind of flows, but that, getting the consultant in that does the salary survey will help us establish what chart will help us to serve Navasota in a manner that's, number one, affordable, but number two, competitive in the marketplace with the others that we're competing for the employees. And then, as we get into goal number five, within our human resources, one of the things that we've already kind of started talking about, but we haven't really dove into just yet, is the personnel handbook. We plan on, after we get the budget in place, that's kind of the pressing matter right now. Once we get the budget done, then the leadership group is going to start really taking pieces and components of the personnel handbook, and one component of that is the PTO, the paid time off policy for public safety. We're going to look at that in the short term and try to have something done. I would like to have that component. We may not have the whole handbook, but we'd like to have that component done, the latter part of this year, so that on January 1st next year, we can start kind of that new system. And then, I'm going to get into maintenance in just a second in more details. I'll touch on it here in facilities and buildings, developing a maintenance plan and facilities master plan. I'm going to jump forward, and then, I'll touch on those as we get to that. And when we get to infrastructure on goal seven, there's quite a few things there that are either in progress or are planned in this proposed budget, particularly those ones under 7.4. You've got some things there that are, the MDTs and all of our police vehicles that are quite aged for those that we have and needing some new ones. And then, our vehicle and equipment replacement plan, taking a good hard look at that enterprise lease program and making sure that that's serving us well, and is that where we need to be, and, you know, what makes the most sense for us. So, we're looking real closely at that as well. And we've already seen the, some of the citywide cameras being put up in the downtown corridor and train corridor, and we're going to look to try to expand that. I don't know if we'll have any additional cameras, or if we'll just have more connectivity to them in this budget, but all of those things. And then, this is where we're going to get back into the maintenance discussion from objective six. So, we use our organizational chart to kind of help us make sure that we're maintaining span of control, that our managers have, you know, the right number of boxes underneath them and responsibilities, and if there's ways that we can make our operation a little bit more efficient. One of the things that has come up, and I think I've discussed with most all of you, and certainly have discussed with the leadership team, is we feel like within, with maintenance services, we can become more efficient by putting that in a department all of its own, and having all building and facility maintenance, property maintenance, fleet maintenance, all under one maintenance services division. Really not adding people. We're just shuffling them around, putting them in there so that we can have one department that focuses on all of our maintenance efforts, and we consolidate, rather than having money broken up in all these different departments and trying to do little tasks. We can consolidate our maintenance efforts and make sure that we're getting the most bang for our buck, the most efficient operation, where there's need for contracts, we can go out for contracts to get all of those things under larger volume of work, so that each department's not trying to do that on their own and not necessarily getting the best price because they're doing smaller projects at one time. And again, that'll kind of serve us as we move forward into making sure that having our facility master plan, having our maintenance plans down, that'll be one of the tasks that that new department gets asked to work on pretty closely. And then, as we get to the budget, when we start talking specifically about this year's budget, we'll talk about a few of the things that, other items that may not have been specifically mentioned on the strategic plan. They might be alluded to, but we're really going to take a back-to-the-basics approach. We're, and I've talked to a couple of you about this. Really, we're going to get back to like balancing our checkbook. We're going to look at what our revenues are, and we're going to balance our expenses against that, and we're going to live within our means. We're not going to go out and issue a bunch of debt. We're not going to try to do more than we can or bring folks on just for the sake of bringing folks on. We're really going to try to focus this year on living within our means and taking an evaluation of where we are, and then, make some decisions about what the path looks like going forward. We're going to move our personnel right now. As you all may have seen in the past, we had personnel assigned to the utilities, to the enterprise funds, but effectively, what that meant is we had employees who were being paid 100% out of a particular utility fund when that employee isn't working 100% of the time. That's not fair to that utility fund or the people that are paying those bills, to have employees that they're paying for that aren't working 100% of their time on that. So, we're going to move the employees to the general fund. We're going to figure out kind of, at least in rough numbers, we're not, it's not going to be, we're not going to spend hours and hours and weeks on trying to figure out to the minute, but we're going to put a rough estimate on, okay, how much of the public works director's time is spent on things that are in the general fund as opposed to things that are in the utility funds? And what does that look like for her time relative to the water fund, the sewer fund, the gas fund? And we're going to take those percentages from those utilities, transfer them to the general fund to pay for them. But that way, any one utility fund account is only paying for the approximate percentage of that employee's salary that they should be obligated to, because that's what they're working towards on their behalf. And then, with regard to debt service, one of the things that myself and the finance director have taken note of, and just really don't feel like it is a necessary effort, it, I don't know why we felt like we needed to be so fancy, but it's, if you notice, our debt service currently, we have in every department, or most of the departments, there's a principal and interest at the very bottom of the page, that supposedly that department's they rat a portion of the debt service for the city overall. And the way in my mind I equate that is, if I have an American Express card and I go to 10 stores, and I charge things, and then, I pay my monthly bill to American Express, I don't need to keep books at my house as to how much money went to Macy's, how much went to JCPenney, and how much, and write them down that way. I just have the obligation to pay the debt service, just like we have the obligation to pay the debt service out of our debt service fund. We set a tax rate that has a debt service component, and that's really what we should be doing. We don't need to muddy the waters of the individual departments. And so, we're going to, we're going to just get back to, again, we're going to try to go back to the basics and just be simple on, these are our obligations, and this is how we're meeting them. And so, as we get into, again, we've talked about personnel a number of times. We're not going to add new personnel. We did have two positions that were part-time, that the department directors asked if they could be converted. This was done several months back, and after looking at, I feel like is justified, so we are going to convert those two positions. We do have, within Parks and Facilities, we've got that Parks Master Plan that's kicking off. We've talked about that, hopefully, tonight. off, we've talked about that, hopefully, tonight, being authorized. Within our fleet equipment, we are, this year, planning on replacing our public safety vehicles with non-leased vehicles. We're going to buy them, you'll see them in the budget, we're going to buy those outright, really, in talking with even our representatives from the enterprise fleet program. They don't really offer much for the public safety vehicles. On the non-public safety, the public works vehicles, they help us manage the maintenance of those, and there's some things that they offer, but on the public safety side, they really just, all they really do is, they get the bill from the repairman, and they pass it on to us, and we really don't need them being the middleman. It's not saving us any money by doing it that way, and so, we're just going to buy those, and we're going to manage our own, through our maintenance services department, we're going to manage our own little lease program, where the public safety departments will lease them from maintenance services, and you'll see some budget transfers for that, but that should help us get to more of a cash basis for our fleet in the future. And then, this year, we're going to evaluate if public works, if we see value in that enterprise program, we'll keep it, we'll continue to do it. If not, we'll start the slow transition of each year as we replace vehicles, we'll just shift them off of that program, and we won't try to buy 60 vehicles in one year, but we'll make that transition as we deem appropriate. And then, with infrastructure, again, on tonight's agenda, we were going to talk about an impact fee study. Feel like that's very important for making sure that we have the infrastructure in place to meet the demands of future development, future growth, and the impact fee study will help us identify, you know, what projects are likely to be needed to serve new growth areas, how much those are likely to cost, so that we can make sure that we're collecting that from the developers and not from our current existing residents, or out of their money that could be going to repairing the existing systems and diverting it over to new areas. So, again, and then, the utility rates study, like I said, again, we want to make sure that that's set on accurate costs, so that's why we're shifting some of the salaries, so make sure that we've got accurate costs for the utilities that we can set our rates accordingly, and make sure that residents aren't overpaying or underpaying, whichever the case may be. But we want to make sure that we've done the exercise and reviewed those, and have something in that serves the community. And then, finally, just touching on some of those that we haven't talked about yet, we do have some money in this year's proposed budget for animal services building improvements. I know that you all are aware, very aware of the condition of the animal services building. It's needed some attention for some time, long before I got here, but it's, we're going to make sure we put something in there, and make sure that we start getting some traction on that. We are going to do the compensation survey and the retirement system, as I mentioned, the strategic plan and CIP development we talked about already. We are going to do some council chambers AV upgrade, trying to get some better audio and visual equipment in here, not only for the recording and the videos of the council meetings, but also, the idea is to put some monitors on the side, so the residents that are towards the back, that are having trouble seeing what's on this slide, will have a monitor a little closer to them, and they can see, and then, also, some monitors up here in the front of the tables there for the council members. If you don't have it printed in front of you, you'd be able to see what's going on and not twist in your head. So, again, just some modest improvements in the audiovisual here will serve us for a long time. Having an off-site cloud server backup is pretty important from a cybersecurity perspective. There's, you've probably seen news articles, there's been a lot of cities that have been hit with cyber crimes, and I don't even know all the words that they use, phishing and ransomware and all those things. I don't know what most of them mean, I just sound smart using them, but it's important for us to address those needs and have some capability there. Already talked about the MDTs, the SCBA's is a multi-year project that you all have been funding, I think last year was year one, this is year two, I think it's a three-year project, those are the air packs for the firefighters that need to be brought up to today's standards. And then, again, we're going to really start to emphasize and really look at quality of life and beautification, and making sure that we're investing in some parks, facilities improvements, making repairs where we can, looking at the landscaping, fertilization improvements for the areas, and just making sure that the community is something that we're proud to be employees of, that have a responsibility towards those areas. That's kind of it for us, I talked fast, but anything that you all have on your mind that you didn't see us talk about, you have questions about, and again, I think the last two bullets we asked, or the last bullet we asked about last time, and I think we're comfortable with just keeping the tax rate, but again, it's there just in case anyone has a change of card or wants to take a closer look, but really, priorities, want to make sure that we've talked about the key items that are on you all's minds, so that staff and I can go back and make sure that we're addressing those.
Going to have an annual street project again.
Street project will be in there, yes, sir?
Yes, sir.
I should have had that on the slides, I apologize.
With the annual street, I think we've already talked about it, but I think that council should have more input on the streets.
Yeah, and so, one of the items that we've talked about, as a part of the comp plan, they've done an analysis, at least given us a high-level analysis using artificial intelligence to go down, they took pictures of the roads, and have started giving us some detail. The plan is to follow that up with the same consultant that comes in, it really gives us analysis, makes some recommendations, and then, review that list with the council, and make sure that we get the streets in the right priority order that meets you all's priorities. And then, the way we will work that is, once we have them in the order, we'll just get as, we'll go down as far as we can on the list with the funding that we have each year.
Where does the sidewalk plan, the walkability plan, where does that fit into? So, just thinking that we have talked about, you know, how do we connect our parks, how do we connect the downtown with the north, southeast, and west ends, but I don't know that that fits into one little pocket into this.
Yeah, I think it's, are you talking about repairs of sidewalks, or adding new sidewalks?
So.
Okay. So, the repairs generally are, generally go in tandem with the streets projects, and we can decide that we want to parse out a portion of that money specific to project sidewalks each year. You all can decide what, you know, how heavily you want the percentage on the sidewalks to be versus the streets. For new sidewalks, most of the time, those are kind of done, in most communities, they're done with new development, they get the new sidewalks. In older areas, you see, you might, you know, come in and add sidewalks at a time. Sometimes, that can be a part of the parks master plan, if we give them that instruction upfront, that we want, kind of an evaluation of the sidewalks. Is Charles here yet? He will be here in a little while. Charles, he'd be a good one to put on the spot when he's standing up here in a little while, and let him know that we'd like to see that as a part of the parks.
One of the things that we had already talked about, and was already part of a plan, I just don't know where that plan went, and so, just want to make sure that we, that's still on our radar, that we need to consider, we have folks that need to be able to walk and get around and skier around and play on the sidewalk instead of the road.
Absolutely. And with that, kind of just, this is a community that's been here a while, there are sidewalks that probably nowadays, we need to go in at intersections and do an ADA upgrade, because they don't have the right ramps and those kind of things, and so, there's probably an effort there that we need to take on with an ADA compliance perspective as well.
Yeah, we got a good, we got a significant grant from Tech Dot, it's been a number of years ago, but a lot of it was done on the main thoroughfares, primarily on the saw.
There's several sections, just like on Washington Avenue.
But it missed some.
It stops, and then, you go three blocks, and it starts again. It'd be nice to see a continuation.
Just be good at least to, to complete an evaluation or something of some sort.
The current regulations require that the homeowner maintain the sidewalks, and it's a very iffy proposition. It's involved the homeowners taking the sidewalks up, throwing them out.
Yeah, okay.
Another thing I would like to add with the sidewalks is, while we're in the budget here, let us know how much we have in lieu of, you know, when new construction comes, they pay a fee if they don't want to put sidewalks in, pay a amount of in lieu, I mean, not in lieu, but in lieu of, and I don't know whether we've done any sidewalks with that money, or it's just sitting in an account somewhere, or?
Okay, I'll certainly find out, and let you know.
And, you know, what we just talking about the ramps and everything, that would be a good way to use some of that money to put sidewalks there, yeah?
Yeah, and then, there may be matching funds, if Tech Dot still has that program.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I'm not 100% certain, again, because you can put anything into any of these little hotty holes here. For the Brewley Park and the pool feasibility, so we did that, I don't know that we finished, I mean, I don't know where that process is, I know that we had the, we had to submit our final suggestions, recommendations, which was right before something big happened. I don't remember what that was. Oh, I think it was our city manager leaving. So, I don't know where that has ended up.
Do we have how many changes? When you prefer it.
Okay, and I don't know if we have any money to, we haven't seen the final then, is that right?
Yeah.
We haven't.
Well, there should have been three or four changes.
There were three options in there, I think, and they were going to come up with the final.
For a discussion about printing a final copy, and then, that's all I remember, so I will definitely find out.
We'll beg to. We can ask them, they're going to be here.
Yeah, Charles will be here.
And I think you and I had talked about, you know, we have a plan there from Brewley Park, we have a couple of others that have been done throughout the years, but those will all go into the Parks Master Plan. They'll use those to help with the Parks Master Plan development, so they don't just get thrown away, or start from ground zero, those all get wrapped up into the comprehensive Parks Master Plan.
Really a big part of the Brewley pool, and that's, we can kind of put a little check mark on that.
I try. Just as kind of a recap, this is our calendar for the next few items that'll be coming up, first week of August, we'll get the proposed budget to you all, then, on August 11th, our first meeting in August, we'll do an actual workshop just like this, but we'll go through the actual departments, departmental budgets, and tonight, we were focused strictly on the general fund, because really, that's the bulk of it, that's where we really want to, you know, we have to set our tax rate and all of that, and since we're not changing the utility rates, we feel like those should be, you know, kind of straightforward, but we will go through that, we'll have all of those for you all, for that August 11th workshop, and then, the public hearing later that month.
That's great, I'm sorry, I have one other question on a goal three.
Sure.
3.1 says, explore recruiting partners like Boys and Girls Club or the YMCA. It says, not started. I believe that there were discussions with the Boys and Girls Club, and I, Bert, maybe you had, but it was, I think, before I got on the council, or, there were talks, and then, something happened, so I don't know if that's, I don't know if it's not.
We've been so close, but yet so far away. Like, every time we get, or when I was on, we'd get close to somebody wanting to do it, getting it, and then, something would happen, and it just got off. I know it's, for a long time, they were talking about going in and working out a deal with the old Fireman's Hall KC Hall that was on the end of Manly Street.
Right.
Never.
That's gone now.
It's one of those things that we as the city, and, you know, providing the quality of life, and the things that we do with parks and library and all those things, it was kind of a, just a goal of council at the time, to integrate something that we could do along those lines. We're a pretty small community to have a Boys and Girls Club, it's, I mean, honestly, it's a pretty broad and tough thing to get, because it's, there's a huge amount of cost involved, because you have to have employees and things like that, so. But what I've seen since we first started that is, I've seen a lot of smaller local organizations stepping up, providing a lot of the things that a Boys and Girls Club would provide, so. I don't know that it needs to be a, you know, a major goal of city council or the city, it just could be something in the back of our mind, make sure we have some sort of, like our parks department kind of keeps track of the leagues that are, sports leagues, and the different activities that are going on, maybe we could, at least the city could act as a liaison to connect all those things that would provide what a Boys and Girls Club would provide. That's just my personal opinion.
I just thought it was funny, it said not started, because it had been started, and fizzled that.
And it's not really.
I remember where I copied this from.
The city's not going to run.
I may have gotten an outdated version, too, I think I copied this out of an old strategic plan report that I certainly might not have gotten the latest.
At a prior, like during strategic planning talks like that, because it was something that we thought that the community needed maybe, or needed at least something to kind of bring it all together, but I truly believe a lot's happened since that first came up that's really addressing a lot of those things.
It's a couple of the things that I would like to see, if you can take a look into it, Robert.
Yes, sir.
In the budget is the drone for the city use, my understanding that the one that the PD do have, it belongs to an individual police officer, that the city don't own one, and also, a portable generator. Looked at the bills I would pay last week, the amount that we pay for the running of the generator for seasons of summer, I think we could probably be paying that towards owning one, can kind of move it around the whole city here, whenever we have different events.
Okay, yeah, and just to kind of couple on to that, one of the things that we talked about the other day, that I'd kind of like to see also, if we're not going to open City Hall and use these restrooms, they have some nicer trailer-mounted restroom facilities that you see at different events, and a lot of cities have found that those, you know, get a lot of use, even if you, you know, we wouldn't just use it for that, we'd have other options, you know, then, and we wouldn't have to rent them, you know, so that might be something that, you know, both of those components are things that we currently rent that we might find the usefulness for. And a generator, I certainly am not going to, with my background, I'm not going to ever say we shouldn't have generators, because a lot of things can happen for us to lose power, so it doesn't have to just be for concerts.
Under that goal number one, where it mentions the increase in sales tax and the hot funds, it says 10% and 5%, do you have any idea kind of where we are at this point in time during the year?
I'm going to look to Kristen, or Taylor, or something, there's Charlie maybe.
Sales tax is tracking it to increase about $10,000, over the last scooter. I'm not sure about how funds actually get that number.
Very good, thanks, Charlie.
Hot funds should go up at the new hotel.
Mm-hmm.
Under marketing, I'm just curious, under goal number two, where it says create a two-year marketing plan, is that something that, I think that was probably put on there before, before Taylor joined the city, and so, I'm wondering kind of. And so I'm wondering kind of if that's something that she still feels like is an important thing to be doing or?
Yes, sir. It's something that I've started working on. It, you know, takes some time to develop that kind of a plan, but it is something that one of my goals for our department to finish next fiscal year.
Yeah, I'm not, not calling you out, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking that before, I think that was established before you even came on board.
It was.
I just wanna make sure it was something that we still saw that it was important to.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
And what is your plan?
I'm working on it.
She's getting episode on the map, man.
On the T, on the TMRS, are we going 1 and 1/2% or just 1% for the next three years or?
We're, we're not tied to any timeframe. We would go 1% because they only do it in even, in full percent increments.
Okay.
So it's five, six, seven or eight. We're at five, we're gonna go to six. And then, and then at some point, yeah, at some point, hopefully we'll be able to afford it and we'll find it reasonable to go to seven. And I'm not even gonna think about going to eight yet, but I wanna take manageable steps, so.
I kinda like the idea that you've got to develop a maintenance plan in-house.
Yes, sir.
That makes sense. Only, only two part-time employees that you wanna make full-time. Is those full-time positions needed?
I believe so, sir. One of them is the assistant fire chief, that's currently a, a part-time position. And really, well, we really need someone that is there in a, in a management role. They, they don't currently have, we have all of our firefighters and then it goes straight from them to the fire chief kind of right now. And, and so we really need, need to start creating that span of control, managing that span of control and helping their department to, to be more functionally organized. And, and having a, an assistant chief here would help kind of divvy up those responsibilities. Maybe one of them's over operations and one over training and administration or, I don't know how they'll break it up, but kind of start divvying up those responsibilities so that it's not all under one person. And if you have someone out, it helps us to have someone that can step in and fill that. And we've, we've kind of seen some, some need for that. And then the other was the, the part-time clerk at the library, clerk, right? Yeah, at the, at the library, they asked to convert that to a full-time position because there's been a, just a lot of times where Tiffany's had to fill in there because, and wasn't able to do other things at other programs because we only have a part-time position there. So trying, trying to fill that out.
Back to the fire department, with the fire chief and assistant fire chief, will this assistant position be a Monday through Friday job or will it be Monday through Sunday job and the fire chief and the assistant chief offset the days that they work or?
I think both of them are likely to be salaried positions Monday through Friday, but on call, like every other director, on call 24 hours a day. So if there's something that happens after hours, they could take turns. If one of them's busy or out with the family, the other one could come in if they, if they needed to come in, whether it be evenings or weekends, that, that you've got two people there and one of them to be available.
The next meeting we have, we will have some numbers, correct?
Yes, sir. You'll actually have the proposed budget in front of you at the next one.
It's already somewhat seemed like that during the interview process, you were listening to us.
I hope so.
He didn't come in blindly. He wa, he watched a few council meetings, did a lot of, did a lot of checking up on us. And still wanted the job.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? All right, well, thank you. Very much and thank you staff. Thank all y'all for, y'all have been very hard at it for the past few months trying to, to be, even get to this point. So thank y'all very much.